I am, but I'm serious now. I am going to use them as factual descriptors as opposed to partisan, words that have partisan implication. So if I say the Republican budget, that means the budget that was drafted and introduced in the Congress by the Republicans in the House of Representatives. I don't mean to characterize it in any way, I just want to describe it, okay? So, let me do three things. One, the budget that passed the House of Representatives for fiscal 12, which was the Republican drafted budget. The second is a piece of legislation that just passed Tuesday afternoon, or Tuesday evening, called cap, cut, and balance. You may have heard of it. And then the third is to try to give you my perspective on the looming expiration, if you will, of the debt limit, what I think the consequences will be if we do not increase the debt limit, and what I think the stakes are, and what I think the likely outcome will be. And I'll try to do all three of those as quickly as I possibly can so that, so that we have as much time for questions as possible. First, the budget that passed the House of Representatives. Some of you may have heard it referred to as the Ryan budget, but it is the budget resolution for fiscal 12. It passed the House of Representatives. All but four Republicans voted for it. Every Democrat, including me, voted against it. Here's what it does. It does two things that have direct consequence on our seniors. One, with respect to Medicare. If you are 55 or over, right now, there would be no change to Medicare except for a couple of things that I will refer to in a few minutes, or a few seconds, I hope. If you are right now 54 or under, when you turn 65, Medicare would no longer exist as we know it. Medicare as we know it now is a guarantee. You turn 65, you are eligible for Medicare. You enter either Medicare Advantage or the so-called Medicare Fee for Service. You go to a doctor, the doctor builds Medicare, and the federal government pays the doctor. Under the plan that passed the House of Representatives, that process would cease to exist. And so when someone who is now 54 would turn 65, and by the way, over a multi-year period, that 65 number would become 67. So over probably a 15-year period, the minimum age for Medicare eligibility would be 67, not 65. That person, once he or she becomes a senior, would be given a voucher. That voucher would then be used by that senior to purchase a private insurance policy. The value of the voucher would be approximately $8,000. The value of the voucher would increase each year in an amount driven by the CPI, the increase in the CPI. Now, the fundamental problem, there's two fundamental problems with that approach, in my opinion. One, healthcare costs and insurance premiums are rising at a rate that dramatically outstrips the CPI. So if the CPI, if you're at 8,000, and then the next year the CPI is 3%, so next year your premium is 8,024, your voucher is 8,024, I'm willing to bet, based on current experience at least, that both healthcare costs and costs of private insurance are going to increase more than that $24. Wild guess, but I think I'm right, okay? But that's one problem. The other is that it assumes that private insurers will in fact sell affordable policies to people who are seniors. Now, I don't think any of you were around as, certainly not as seniors, when Medicare came into being, but the reason it came into being was that private insurers would not sell affordable policies to seniors back in the 50s and the 60s and so on. And that was, by the way, when most insurers were not for profit. Now, most insurers are for profit. So I think a reasonable question to ask is, will a profit-driven insurance company sell affordable policies to that subset of our population that everyone recognizes is the most expensive subset of our population to insure? Short answer is, I think, probably no. But that's the plan. So Medicare, as we know it, would cease to exist. You get a voucher, you buy a private policy, and you hope that private policy, A, is affordable and covers what you need. Now, the Congressional Budget Office, which is the nonpartisan analytical arm of the Congress, has estimated that here's what would happen. Under current law, these are big picture round numbers, approximately 75% of a senior's healthcare cost right now are covered by Medicare. This is on average, everyone obviously will be a little different, but this is on average. And on average, 25% of a senior's costs would be, are right now covered out of pocket. Like I said, on average, round numbers. The Congressional Budget Office has estimated that by 2030, in other words, eight years into this plan, that that number would have swung to the point where approximately 35% of the seniors' costs would be covered by the insurance policy that they have, and 65% would be out of pocket. So this is a big-ticket item for seniors in terms of where the costs for providing healthcare fall. Right now, they fall roughly 75% to the government, 25% to the senior. That number will essentially flip, according to the Congressional Budget Office, if this plan were to ever take on the force of law. Let us hope that it does not. Second thing, with respect to Medicaid. It would block grant Medicaid, and it would cut the funding for Medicaid over the next 10 years by approximately $800 billion, with a B, $800 billion. Now, please know this about Medicaid. 65% of what we spend on Medicaid is in one area: institutionalized care for seniors and those who are severely disabled. So, and know that seven out of every 10 health, pardon me, nursing home resident receives at least some portion of their expenses covered by Medicaid. And know this also, this is a factor for your children and your grandchildren. One out of every three kids in this country get their healthcare through Medicaid. One out of every three kids. Anyway, that would be block granted to the states and cut over a 10-year period by $800 billion. So if that's the case, the likelihood that a senior who is relying on Medicaid to cover his or her nursing home costs, they're going to see at a minimum a reduction in the amount available to them to cover the healthcare costs. So that is the so-called Ryan budget, or the Republican drafted budget that passed the House of Representatives. Again, it passed. All but four Republicans voted for it. Every Democrat voted against it. We now move to, and by the way, just to set your minds at ease, I have an enormous level of confidence, a 100% level of confidence, that that budget will never, ever take on the force of law. But it does reflect the thinking of those who drafted it. Okay, let's go to the second thing. Cut, cap, and balance. I think that's the right order. Cut, cap, and balance was introduced, by the way, for those of you who felt that healthcare went a little too quickly, took about 14 months for healthcare, but let's, cut, cap, and balance was introduced in the House of Representatives on the afternoon of Friday, July 15. It was voted on on the evening of Tuesday, July 19, okay? This is, in my opinion, the most sweeping piece of fiscal legislation that has been introduced in the Congress, at least since I've been there. We had four days to look at it. It does a couple of things. It cuts spending, right now, current spending, from approximately 24% of what we call GDP, gross domestic product, to approximately 21%, and then over a 10-year period, has that number dropped to approximately 19% of GDP. And the cuts, by the way, are not specified. It is just that total expenditures could not exceed, in the next year, 21% of GDP, and as we go forward, 19% of GDP. It would cap expenditures at that level, going forward. And the, in my opinion, the most difficult part of it is the balance part of it, which would impose a constitutional amendment that requires a balanced budget. Now, on the surface, you ask anybody, should the federal government have a balanced budget? I'll guarantee you, I mean, I would certainly answer yes, and I think that the vast majority of the people in this room would answer yes. But here's the thing. A, do you make it a constitutional requirement? And B, here's what it says. It says that spending, once the constitutional amendment was ratified by three-fourths of the states, would be capped at 18% of GDP, of gross domestic product. Now, you should know that our expenditures have exceeded 18% of gross domestic product every year, every year, since the mid-'60s. So in other words, in the pre-Medicare days, the pre-Medicaid days, we were spending more than 18%. You all know the difference. I mean, but let me just give you some statistics that I think are important. Where do I do my glasses? In 1966, the average life expectancy was 70 years. It's now 79. In 1966, the median age of the population was 29. It's now 38. In 1966, the percentage of the population over 65 was 9. It's now 13. So in other words, we live in a vastly different world. And by the way, in 1966, a third of our seniors lived in poverty. So see what Medicare and Social Security has done to the ability of people to live productive lives as they're seniors. But anyway, this cap, or pardon me, this balance part would take us to a level of spending not seen since the pre-Medicare/Medicaid days. In other words, in my opinion, wholly unrealistic level of spending. It would also impose a constitutional amendment that would require two-thirds, or pardon me, a constitutionally enforceable provision, that would require two-thirds of both chambers of Congress to approve an increase in revenue. Any increase in revenue. Whereas it would only require a simple majority, that is to say 50% plus one, to cut any expenditure. So here's what this would do in very real terms. And this is something that I have been particularly focused on because I've offered legislation to do this. I offered legislation a couple of months ago to take away three tax breaks that the big five oil companies realize. These tax breaks save for the big five oil companies approximately $4 billion a year. Now, by the way, their after-tax profits in 2010 were $77 billion. My legislation would be asking them to try to eke out an existence on $73 billion, okay? I think they're going to be able to do it. They may have to have a, you know, have a bake sale, they may need, they may need to do some car washes, I'm not sure, but I think they'll be able to get by on $73 billion. The president of Chevron, or pardon me, of ConocoPhillips described my legislation as, quote, "un-American," close quote. Leaving aside whether it's un-American or not, under the provisions of this balanced budget amendment, three, two-thirds of the members of Congress in both chambers, House and Senate, would have to vote to eliminate that tax break. Whereas if a proposal came out that said, you know what, we just can't afford Medicaid anymore, you'd only need 50% plus one. I would suggest to you that that's simply not fair or balanced. So that passed the House of Representatives. It will not pass in the Senate. So again, it is a piece of legislation that is designed to make a statement. It is not designed to make law. Thank God. Now, and again, under the heading of just imparting facts, all but nine Republicans voted for it, all but five Democrats voted against it. Now let me move to the debt limit. And this, this is the part of this that I really, I want to make sure that you get this because this is, it's crucial to our future. Let me start with this way. Everybody is to blame for where we are. Everyone. This is not a Republican problem, this is not a Democratic problem. Everyone is responsible. In the last 50 years, we have had four balanced budgets. Four, okay? So want to blame Barack Obama, go right ahead. You want to blame George Bush, go right ahead. But guess what? You'll be wrong. Everyone owns a piece of this problem. Therefore, every one of us must be willing to shoulder a piece of the solution. But let me put it in context. And tell you how difficult it is to achieve what it is we're trying to achieve. And tell you why it's so difficult that certain things have been put down as markers that, I mean, as lines in the sand. We spend about $3.7 trillion a year. So round numbers, $300 billion a month, round numbers. And I'm not saying this is good, but round numbers, we take in about $180 billion a month, and we, round numbers, borrow about $120 billion a month. So in other words, we have actual cash standing beside, behind approximately 60% of what we do on a monthly basis. If we don't increase the debt limit, that means that approximately 40% of what we're now doing across the entire span of the federal government, we'll stop doing. Now let me put that in context. One out of every $3 we spend is right here in this room. One out of every $3 we spend is in two programs: Social Security and Medicare. Add three more programs: the Department of Defense, the Department of Veterans Affairs, and interest on the national debt, and I've now described two out of every $3 that we've spent. Notice I did not mention Medicaid, okay? So if we're only going to do 60% of what we normally do, which will be imposed upon us if we don't raise the debt limit by August 2nd, and 67% of what we do are in those five areas, and most reasonable people would say, you know what, we got to be awful careful about those five areas. We got, we got Social Security, which people have paid into all their lives. We have one out of every three seniors in this country, their only income is Social Security. I think we want to be extremely careful about going forward with Social Security in any way that would adversely impact seniors. Medicare, I mean, we all see the rise in cost of healthcare. I mean, I think we have to be, again, enormously careful to remove from seniors, or even diminish from seniors, a benefit that, again, they have paid into all of their working lives. Department of Defense, is there money we can cut there? Yeah, there is. But is there several hundred billion that we can cut there? No, there isn't. We live in a dangerous world. Department of Veterans Affairs, anyone want to stand up and say, you know what, we're giving veterans too much? I certainly don't. I certainly don't. And interest on the national debt, guess what? We borrowed the money for things that we authorized in the past. So we got to pay the interest on that, and if we allow the full faith and credit of the United States to collapse, then I think we have a set of problems that make preserving Social Security and Medicare look like a walk in the park. So when you hear people say, you know what, don't borrow, don't borrow, shut it down, cut, you know, throw away the credit card, learn to live within your means, know what that is. Know what that is. It's inconceivable that if we are all of a sudden going to do 60% of what we now do, that that 67% that I just outlined is going to remain untouched. It simply is inconceivable. So please know that as you hear the different things put forward. Know this as well. One of the lines in the sand that has been put out there by the Republicans in the House of Representatives, not the Republicans in the Senate, big difference, is no revenue can be a part of a deal associated with carrying forward the debt limit, of increasing the debt limit. They have said that they will not approve a plan that includes even a dime of additional revenue. So where does that take you? If you're not going to include a dime of additional revenue, you have to cut spending, you have to bring your revenue and expense into balance, because that's what the balanced budget amendment says, and that's where the ultimate goal is. And you've got 67% of what we're doing, most reasonable people would say, you know, we ought to leave those alone. Then that leaves you with the 33%. So that's, in effect, everything else that the federal government does. So cancer research, housing assistance, student aid, you know, you name it. The Congress, maybe not a bad idea. You know, the Supreme Court, the executive branch, everything else is in that 33%. And by the way, you could cut every single dime, every single dime, and we'd still have a deficit. So if the marker in the sand is you cannot raise revenue, then the only way out is to go to that 67%, okay? Just please, just, this is, I'm not taking a position here. I'm just doing math. I'm just doing arithmetic. It's the only way that it works. So what we need, in my opinion, is to, we need a balanced plan. We need to do what families do. When families are struggling, when families can't meet their obligations, everybody shoulders a piece of the burden. Everybody says, I'll do my part. High school kid gets a job. Only one kid in the family gets braces, the others go without. I mean, that's what every family does. It's what my family did. I grew up in a paycheck-to-paycheck family. That's what we need to do. We all need to do our part. And if we take the position that some among us don't have to do anything, then I think it means it's going to fall to the people among us who are the most vulnerable. And that's what we have to, we have to try to avoid. By the way, I have some confidence that we're going to get there. I have some confidence that what we see now as very, very hard positions are going to become somewhat more flexible positions as each day counts down towards August 2nd. I'll close with this. If we let the debt limit, if we let it stand where it is, and we stop borrowing, and we limit what we do to 60% of what we're now doing. Here's just a problem. On August 3rd, this is, this is just a fact, on August 3rd, $23 billion worth of Social Security checks are due to be mailed out that day, on August 3rd. You know how much money is supposed to come in on August 3rd? $12 billion. If we can't borrow, we're only doing $12 billion. That's what this means, okay? So again, when people say, like I said, cut up the national credit card, live within your means, by the way, reasonable goals. But those are goals that we have to get there over a period of time, in my opinion. We have to recognize that this is a problem that has a very long history, and it is a problem that if we don't solve, we will inflict enormous pain on everyday people like all of you. Enormous pain. Interest rates will go up. Stock market will go down, so 401Ks, the value will drop. Every single thing that you do will become more expensive to do because the cost of borrowing will go up. Unemployment will spike. So this is what's at stake here, and this is why I am, I remain as optimistic as I am that, that we're going to get to a deal. It may be a deal that none of us like, but it will be a deal that will avert, which I believe will be a catastrophe to not just the full faith and credit of the United States government, but to the everyday lives of every single person in this room and every single person in this country. I am confident, and I hope to God my confidence is borne out, is we will sometime between now and midnight on August 1 slash August 2, we will get there, and we will have something that keeps the ability of the government to continue to provide, particularly provide for the people who are the most reliant on the government, keep that intact. Now with that, I'm happy to take some questions. Will, how am I doing this? Am I calling on people, or? All right, I'll start right here, sir. And then, and sir, you in the hat, I'm going to come to you. I'll come to you next, okay? And sir, we'll start with you.
All right. What would happen if we devaluated the dollar like the banana republics do?
Couple of things would happen. First, we would see massive spikes in things that are priced in dollars, like oil. So if we think we've had a problem with gasoline prices now, those prices, I mean, we would, we would wish we had today compared to what we would have two months from now if we do that. Also, anything we import, which frankly is a lot, we import a lot, the prices of that would go up dramatically, and the ability to borrow would also, the cost of borrowing, I should say, would increase dramatically as well. Those are just three very quick implications that, again, would affect every single person in this room if we were to allow the dollar to be devalued. Yes, sir. I'm going to go to this gentleman, then I'm going to go to that gentleman, then I'm going to come to you, and then I'm going to try to get to the back of the room.
I was under the impression that when the healthcare bill passed in 2010, the 96% of the Americans would be fully covered for insurance. So how come that has not resolved the problem that we're having with Medicare in the future?
Okay, good question. And first off, the healthcare bill is going to be phased in over a period of time. It will be fully phased in as of 2014. And the 96% number may be a touch high, but what it would do is it would take approximately 35 million of those who are currently uninsured and provide them with insurance. So there would still be somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 million Americans who would not be insured. And that, the 35 million that would be insured, it would be, it would be arrived at by basically two things. One, increasing eligibility for Medicaid, and the second would be, would be providing premium support assistance to families that make less than 400% of the poverty level to buy a private insurance policy. If we were to fully phase in the healthcare plan, get there in 2014, those are achievable goals. The other thing I should point out, and I thank you for raising this. The healthcare bill did several things that improve Medicare. It increased, pardon me, extended the solvency of the trust fund by 12 years. It closes the donut hole over a multi-year period. This year, for example, the donut hole is closed to 50% of the donut hole. And it also makes so-called wellness or preventive care visits, non-co-pay visits, for Medicare recipients. The Republican budget proposal that I referred to earlier that passed the House of Representatives that I said I thought would never take on the force of law, it does away with all of those things. It does away with the closing the donut hole and the preventive care visits being free. I said, I said, this gentleman would be next, and then you, and then I'm moving to the back of the room. Yes? I have, I have no peripheral vision. No, I'll get there.
It's my understanding that Social Security cost the government absolutely nothing because of the trust fund that is supposed to keep it solvent for the next 20 years or more. So how in the world does cutting any part of Social Security help with the deficit?
First off, essentially, essentially, you're correct, but let me, let me answer it this way. First off, anyone who tells you that Social Security has caused or contributed in any way to the current deficit is simply misinformed. It has not. Social Security runs a surplus each year. Social Security surplus is, in effect, borrowed by the general fund that supports the federal government, and that borrowing is supported by Treasury bonds. So every year, and this has been the case since at least the 1980s, if not before, every year, the Social Security trust fund runs a surplus. That surplus is then taken to support other activities of the government, and then that surplus is replaced by bonds. At a certain point, we're going to have to start redeeming those bonds, because I think within the next couple of years, Social Security will begin to not, the revenue coming in will be less than the then-current obligations, and we're going to begin to redeem the bonds. The only way I can, I can sort of answer your question is, had we not borrowed that money, then, let's say, in a given year, it's $200 billion. That's either $200 billion less that we would be doing as a country. So somewhere, $200 billion that we're now doing, we would not do, or somewhere, we would be increasing... would be increasing tax receipts by those $200 billion. But, but Social Security has not caused the current problem, and is a very minor piece, in my opinion anyway, of our problem going forward. Okay? You, sir, and then I'm going to, I, I noticed you, I, I'll, I'll, all right.
Can you ask a question?
Okay.
Oh, hi. Okay. I was a computer consultant for a very long time, and you get to meet a lot of different people in a lot of different situations. And once upon a time, I had a bunch of Russian programmers working for me, who were, while we were paying them cash $240 a day, it's a long time ago, they were getting SSI. And when I asked about it, they said, the State Department? The State Department. All right? They also got both Blue Cross and Blue Shield of New Jersey and New York, and their kids were being sent to private school. The excuse for SSI was that they were language disadvantaged, but they spoke good enough to do, you know, jobs. So what's going on here?
Yeah. I am, the set of circumstances you're describing, I, I am going to have to familiarize myself with, if they were getting all of those things. And I'm not suggesting they weren't. I mean, I'm, I'm taking your word for it. That means that they were in this country and working legally. I mean, there is no way for a person who is not documented to get SSI. There, there simply isn't. But why they were eligible for it based on a language barrier, that's, that's something, yeah, that's something brand new to me. I'm going to have to research it. If you can give your name to Will, I will, I, I don't want to sort of bluff my way through an answer. I don't know the answer. Let me find it out, and, and then I'll get the answer back to you through Will. Okay? I'm sorry. This gentleman, huh? Okay, I'm going to have, as I, sir, I said I'm going to have to find out, okay?
Yeah, write your name, address, and then the question on the index card, and you can leave them on your way out. That's the best way to do that.
You, sir, and then there was a young lady in the back who was pretty determined to ask a question. Yes, okay. Sir? You got your question asked already?
Well, I, I just want to maybe add. It, it concerns the Social Security bit. Now, the Gang of Six has put together some sort of format for legislation involving taking money right out of our pockets very soon, if it passes. What will Congress, the House of Representatives, do to stop that, if they can? I know you guys can't, because you don't have the majority, but I think you're going to have something that looks like a filibuster because of those 88 other guys in there.
The, the proposal, I mean, I'm going to be as clear on this as I possibly can be. And by the way, the Gang of Six proposal is essentially an outline. It is not fully developed, fully fleshed out, you know, numbers and so on. But one of their proposals is to change the calculation of the COLA, not just for Social Security, but for everything. From the current CPI we use to something called the chained CPI, which will result in a cost of living calculation that, on average, would be approximately 3/10 of 1% lower than the traditional COLA that we're all familiar with. That is, and that would, that's the area that would have the impact on Social Security.
Oh, there's another area, sir. They're going to take it like age group. They're saying that they're going to take, when you reach age 5, it's going to be this much less every, every month than when you reach...
Yeah, I, I'm, 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 I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I have an exhaustive knowledge of the Gang of Six proposal, which basically just became public yesterday. But that's a piece of it that I simply don't know. I will, I will have to, my understanding of the only implication to Social Security was the move to this chained CPI as opposed to the traditional. I'll have to find out. But what I will tell you is that I think there is, there's not a lot of tolerance on our side of the aisle for a plan that would have a detrimental impact on seniors, and I've not heard any discussion of a plan that would, in effect, as seniors age, give them less to live on. I've not heard any discussion of that. And I will tell you, as an 88, with a guy with an 88-year-old father and an 87-year-old mother, I'm a no on that idea. Now, there's a, sir, I'll take you, you, sir, in the white t-shirt, and then you in the red shirt, and then you. Okay? And I'm running out of time. Okay? I just wanted to answer the other, the other gentleman's question about that, about the different ages. I think that's a collective result of the chained CPI over the years. In other words, you start at 65, you're losing 3/10 of 1%. But collectively, by the time you get to age 75... Is a compound. It compounds to a larger amount. That's, I think that's what was, what was talked about. Okay, I think, I think your assessment is right. And what I was trying to say, I don't know of any proposal that would delineate members, not members, participants by age, but there, you're absolutely right. If we were to move to a chained CPI, there would be a cumulative impact, because each year, the individual's COLA would be 3/10 of 1% less than it would normally be. Now, who did I say I was going to go to next? You in the red shirt. And then, yes, sir, you.
Hi. I find Congress very interesting, and we're in this pickle because of Congress. It doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican. I would like to know how they can vote on increasing benefits or expenses without, at the same time, specifying where they're allocating the income for it.
That's a very good question, and it is a problem that has deep historical...